He's on his way.
I'm gonna call the Dumfries Town Council meeting of Wednesday, August 6, 2025 at 7:00 PM to order. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson? Here. Councilmember Pete?
Here.
Councilmember Fields?
Here.
Councilmember Young? Chair Pro Tim Miles?
President.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Here.
Mayor Wood?
Here. Um, please note Councilman Young called and said he was in this route. Uh, I wanna take a, I know I just called the meeting to order, but I'm gonna take a brief recess. We have, I know some of you see our elevator, uh, wasn't working and we have some people, uh, who wanna be ADA compliant and they wanna make it to the meeting on time. And so, in the spirit of that, I wanna make sure she's okay. So I'm gonna take a brief recess to see what the issue is. Has everybody made it upstairs who needed to make it upstairs to the meeting? Alright, we will now bring the meeting back to order. Alright. Next on our meeting is, uh, our prayer and pledge of allegiance. Clerk, do we have someone here to pray? I'm gonna ask Deaconess Bailey, our supervisor, can you open us up today?
You always ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. If you could go to the Throne of Grace and Mercy with me and let's pray. Our Father and our God, we are eternally grateful for this wonderful day that you've given to us, one that we've never seen before. But in your infinite wisdom, God, you allowed us to see another day, to dwell in your kingdom, to serve your people, Father. And so, we thank you for this community. We thank you, dear Lord, that, um, the history that is brought into this community, dear Lord, still prevails. Father, we thank you for this wonderful council, dear Lord, that is always about serving your community, Father. Now, Lord, as we've come to do your business, we ask, God, that you just anoint every tongue that is spoken, encourage every heart that is here, and let us continue to keep our minds on Dumfries, Virginia, dear God. The first and always the first in Prince William County. We're grateful, God. Bless the homes or the council members that are presiding here today. Keep the home safe, provided for, and in dwelling with love, Father. We are grateful for the agenda. We are grateful for the closure of the agenda. And for everyone that is represented here today and acknowledged today, we thank you for their service. It's in your divine son that we always pray, and we thank you for this day again. Amen.
Amen. I ask that all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, please be seated. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'm gonna ask that we move first the resolution to name the park, uh, up to, uh, action item.
Oh, you got, okay. I got you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Fields.
Not moving anything. Um, we're just gonna add to number four, have a B, to have a proclamation of naming new park located at the former, uh, landfill site in honor of Luke and Clarice Torian as the, uh, Dumfries Luke and Clarice Torian Overlook Park. We'll add that to the agenda, please, on the number four, item B.
Was there, was there any other changes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
I'd like to, um, add also, amending the consent agenda to add the approval of settlement CL24-10935 and authorization for the town manager to sign.
Okay. I'll put that as J. J. Okay. Any other amendments, adjustments to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I welcome a motion.
A motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Second. Alright, it's been motioned and second, you choose your second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson? Yes. Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
Alright. First on our agenda is a proclamation commemorating the historic appointment of Janaymo Monroe as the first African-American female president of the Prince William Chamber of Commerce. Recognize her impact on the business community. Is she here? Okay. It says, "Whereas the Prince William County Chamber of Commerce serves as a vital partner in fostering economic growth, business development, and community engagement throughout Prince William County and the town of Dumfries, uh, Ms. Monroe has been elected as the new president, making history to hold this esteemed position. Her professional achievements, entrepreneur vision, and commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion has made her a respected leader and role model within the regional business community. And with her historic appointment as president, it reflects the progress and shared values of our region, ensuring that the chamber reflects the full strength and diversity of Prince William County's business landscape. And whereas the town of Dumfries recognizes the vital role that the Chamber of Commerce in supporting local business, fostering collaboration between the private and public sectors, creating opportunities for economic mobility and growth, and her leadership will bring renewed energy, continued innovative strategies, and inclusive practices that would directly benefit the business community in Dumfries and strengthen the town's ongoing efforts to attract, support, and retain thriving local enterprises. Now and therefore be it proclaimed, by the mayor and town council, we commemorate and celebrate this historic appointment as the first African-American female president of the Prince William Chamber of Commerce, and express deep appreciation for her commitment to advancing business excellence and community impact. Be it further proclaimed, that we present this as a testament to the town's recognition and support of her leadership and to the Prince William County Chamber of Commerce as a valued partner in advancing the economic vitality in our region. Signed by order of the Dumfries Town Council, Mayor Derek R. Wood."
Good evening, town of Dumfries. To your mayor, vice mayor, and your city council members, as well as Madam Supervisor and other distinguished people in the room, as Ms. Torian. But most of all, thankful to the man over there in the corner with the cellphone, uh, forty years of following me around, supporting me. I am here as the new chair of the chamber, but I'm here because of all of you. I'm here because of those especially that looked like me when I moved here thirteen years ago and invited me into certain meetings and certain opportunities. I stayed because I saw an opportunity for us to do more. When I look at this council, I know how important it is for us to continue the work we do in every position we hold and to invite others along with us. It is not the responsibility of us to make sure the right skin tone, culture, or language-acquired person is in a position. It is our responsibility to make sure the right qualified person is in each position. And if we continue to do that and pray steadfastness, we will continue to have the right people. I will say that with over two hundred and thirty-plus businesses in the town of Dumfries, nine thousand in the Prince William County, we have so much more work to do. We need to make sure that our city council members here are over on the other side of town, representing those two hundred-plus businesses. As the chamber chair, I invite you to join the councils and committees where there is money, where there are grants, where there are funding opportunities, when there are other leadership opportunities for you to further who you are as Dumfries leaders by participating in the chamber's various councils and committees. Today I have Eugene Brown, who is the Community Engagement Officer for the chamber. And if there's anything you need to know about those cities and, uh, those community, uh, council and committees, Eugene can tell you that. The chamber is the largest in the county, and it represents up just a percentage of the businesses, but over thirteen hundred. And it, with that said, that thirteen hundred represents some of Dumfries. We wanna make sure all of Dumfries is represented. Please do come, and I'm not talking just businesses, but if you'd like to support, please do support, because your mayor has a plan for Dumfries, and the chamber deserves to help with that plan, because that's what we're there for, to grow communities and to grow business. And the steadfastness of this council has now been officially invited to make sure we are supporting the town of Dumfries businesses at large. I thank you, I appreciate this, and I plan to continue to do the work that represents Prince William County as a whole, because the same way my husband and I traveled for thirty years with the military is the same way we move about this county, and that is to represent everyone. I thank you, and God continue to bless the town of Dumfries.
Just wanna say, I, I met Ms. Monroe as the, uh, co-chair of the Veterans Council, uh, when I was serving on the councils as a, as a young councilman for the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. And I served on the, had the privilege of also serving on the education committee over there, giving out scholarships. Think we gave a scholarship out to our own Matthew Crinkley out of Dumfries, uh, when he graduated high school from the Chamber of Commerce. So they do have scholarships at those education committees, and it's, um, it's always a great thing. Alright, next on our agenda, uh, but first is, may I want to take a point of personal privilege, 'cause it's often that we get our own supervisor here. Uh, Supervisor Bailey, would you like to, uh, just give us, uh, some brief remarks? Yes, since you're in the place, we, we don't never get to see you. We, we usually have our meetings on the same days.
We do, we do, and it's, it is indeed an honor to be here with you this evening. I, uh, when he said Deaconess Bailey come and pray, I, I had to change my hat. But it was an honor to, uh, go before, before the Throne of Grace. To, uh, my wonderful, exceptional-wise council. It goes without saying, I, I love all of you dearly, and, uh, you are doing amazing, amazing work, and it's always a pleasure to be in your midst, always. To the wonderful mayor and the wonderful vice mayor, uh, my hats off to you. You are exceptional, that's all I gotta say about that. But I am here, uh, this evening for several reasons, but one especially, uh, I wanted to come before, um, the council and offer my congratulations, uh, for your decision, hopefully, um, going forward to continue to honor those that have planted seeds in the community to make it bigger and better. And so, I have a few words prepared, it'll be quick, uh, but it's a beautiful day in Dumfries, and, um, so much so that, um, the opportunity and decision to honor one that has served in our community, our very own Appropriations Chair, Delegate Luke E. Torian, my former pastor, but I'm, I'm sure he'll always be my, yeah, my pastor, um, uh, and he carries that mantle in all that he does in the community. But, um, it's really befitting that you take this opportunity to honor one, um, from a legislative vein that have, that has the influence and the admiration for all of his constituents. And, um, he has a strong fan base across the state of Virginia that borders into legendary. And so, we're really, uh, proud of him. Now, um, let's be very clear. It is also befitting that you have, uh, when I, when I, when Derek and I, when we first, when, as the town was growing and we, we were looking at this, this mound, this hill, uh, in Dumfries, and, uh, we looked at it and we said, okay, what's gonna go there? And so, now, we have a vision for there. And I think that is, um, promising for this community. I think it's promising because, uh, it is a man who has given his life to service. And, uh, I came this evening because I think Delegate Torian has a steady and unwavering, um, form of advocacy in the town of Dumfries that keeps replicating more and more to make the town grow. And when the town was in need of funding and the county couldn't provide the level of funding that was needed, Delegate Torian stood and spoke on behalf of the neighborhood and the General Assembly to bring forth positive results in the town. We should be proud of that. And so, today, um, it is befitting that we focus on the unveiling of a deserving honor for our Appropriations Chair, first time ever from the town, the, the county of Prince William, the town of Dumfries, our Appropriations Chair, that we will take a beautiful green space, like the mound on the hill, and, 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 and make sure that he understands that we embrace him and that we love him and that we appreciate him and all that he has done for the town of Dumfries and for the county, uh, of Prince William. And so, to the council, for your wisdom, for your vision, for your respect, for your focus, I say it's an honor to serve with you, and I appreciate you, um, really focusing on and saluting a gentleman called Luke Torian.
Thank you. Just before, before I read it, I'll give council opportunity to make any remarks that they want. Councilman Fields, do you have anything you want to speak to on the resolution before I read it?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay. Councilman Pete?
No, no comment, man.
Okay. Councilman Peterson?
I will say that I was taught by Ms. Bailey about this man. And he seems wonderful, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Young?
Having had met him and, uh, says well-deserved, and understanding the history behind it well-deserved.
Chair Pro Tim, I know you're online, do you have anything you wanna say, Solani?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, so I just wanna say very briefly that I've had the honor of knowing Delegate Torian and also Ms. Clarice, uh, since I got involved in our community, and they have not only poured into us economically as a town, they've also taken their time to mentor us and be there for us to give advice and help lead us through the way. So I'm at this point, I'm very honored to have the opportunity to honor them, and I will yield at that.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, the naming of the park is, is more than a name, it is the recognition of a legacy. And what this does for the community is it recognizes the roots and the impact that the Torian family has had here, and it also sets a precedence for the future generations to know the importance of the impact and how important an impact can make on a community. And it sets a precedence for future generations to know how to make an impact and how that impact can be recognized. So thank you to the Torian family for your sacrifices and the impact that you have made here in the town of Dumfries.
Mr. Mayor, may I reclaim?
Yes, sir, Councilman Fields.
I was gonna say this during, uh, council comment time, but I didn't know you can put me on the spot like that, um, at this time. But as you look at us here on this council and as we look out at you, Ms. Torian, and everyone that came to support, everyone has got a smile on our face. And I'm happy to have that smile on my face, because we got it right. You know? We got it right. Took a little time, but we got it right. So I wanna acknowledge that, you know? But that's what we do, we gonna work together, we gonna get things right. And thank you for allowing us to get it right. So, I got you, Kenny. You know I'm gonna call you out. But, um, thank you so much, and it's such an honor and a pleasure to be able to look around and see these smiling faces smiling back at you all. Thank you.
I'm gonna say good evening, everyone, again. Today, uh, we don't mark Today, we don't mark a moment that's not just about naming a park, but as we've heard echoed, it's about honoring a legacy. So it's with great pride that we begin to talk about dedicating this space as the Luke and Clarice Torian Overlooked Park. A name that reflects both vision and service, partnership and purpose. You've heard some of the accolades, Delegate Torian has been a towering figure, not just in the town of Dumfries, but across the entire Commonwealth. His advocacy for us has brought critical funding to the very landfill that we are rededicating as well as numerous Quantico Creek and environmental projects that he has directly appropriated for the town of Dumfries. So it's about transforming what was once a landfill into a place of beauty, restoration and community joy. But behind every public leader who carries the torch, there's often someone who keeps the flame alive in quieter ways. And that's why the park bears both names, Clarice Torian. She has been essential, serving faithfully behind the scenes. Many don't know as an educator in Prince William County Public Schools, as a, as a community mentor and as a steadfast supporter. In honoring them together, we honor the power of partnership and leadership. We acknowledge that service doesn't happen in a vacuum, it takes a team. And sometimes the greatest sacrifices are made by the ones who never seek the spotlight. Too often we wait until someone is no longer with us to say thank you. But here in the town of Dumfries, we believe in giving people their flowers and saying thank you while they can smell them. And in naming this park today, we're doing just that. Luke and Clarice Torian didn't just serve this town, they invested in it. They invested in its people, in its future, in its dignity. And now generations of families, children and visitors will gather here, not just to enjoy the views overlooking Quantico Creek and the Marine Corps Museum and the entire town, but to reflect on what it means to leave a legacy that lifts others up. So on behalf of the town of Dumfries, we say thank you, Delegate Torian and Mrs. Torian. This park is your story made visible and we're honored to be a part of that. With that said, I will now read your resolution. It says, whereas the town of Dumfries is undergoing transformational revitalization and development through strategic economic development and public-private partnerships, and whereas as part of this development, over eighty acres of land previously occupied by landfill is being restored and reimagined as a public green space and community park overlooking the historic Quantico Creek. And whereas Delegate Torian successfully advocated for the Virginia tax reforms protected, projected to double the town's gaming tax revenue by July 2026, ensuring long-term revenue stability for local services and infrastructure projects. Delegate Torian has also secured state appropriations for Quantico Creek flood mitigation, directly contributing to the environmental viability of the park site and the protection of surrounding communities. Mrs. Torian served for the region for over three decades as a dedicated educator, a counselor and administrator, improving the lives of thousands of children and families across the county. As Director of Student Services for Prince William County Schools, Mrs. Torian led initiatives in youth wellness, school safety, counseling, equity programs that reflect values of community, family and healing that this park will embody. And whereas both Luke and Clarice Torian have demonstrated a lifelong commitment to public service, spiritual leadership and empowerment of future generations through ministry at First Mount Zion Baptist Church and advocacy across the local, state and educational platforms. Whereas the park's location overlooking the Quantico Creek and servant as a symbol of environmental renewal, turning a landfill into a landmark. And community gatherings, it's a fitting tribute to the legacy and leadership of the Torian family, naming this park the Dumfries Luke and Clarice Torian Overlooked Park. It honors their shared legacy of service, their shared legacy of vision and their shared legacy of transformational impact on the town of Dumfries and its residents. Now therefore, be resolved by the Dumfries Town Council that the town formally names the park located at the former landfill site, the Dumfries Luke and Clarice Torian Overlooked Park. Being further resolved that this name shall be commemorated with appropriate signage and dedicated to honor their enduring contributions to the Torian family, to the growth, well-being and the unity of Dumfries. Signed, this sixth day of August by order of the Town Council, Mayor Derek R. Wood. This council to get a picture with you.
We dress like, we dress like. Too much traffic, I didn't have time to go on the shoes. Straight from work.
No shoes.
Thought I had shoes on. Supervisor Bailey, Delegate Torian? Delegate King, that's it.
One, two, three. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Let me get my little phone.
Oh, yeah.
Have my, yes, I have my. Good evening, everyone. Now, I am not the one who's behind the mic most of the time, so you know that. So, you know, I say this with all, from the bottom of my heart, that I do appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before you this evening. So first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Wood, Vice Mayor Nickerson, each Town Council member, the Board of County Supervisors, the School Board members, the General Assembly, colleagues of my husband, community leaders and so many others who came together to make this possible. It is truly humbling to be recognized in this way. To have something named in your honor is no small gesture, as that's been pointed out. To see this brought to life by so many people who believe that my husband and I are deserving of such a tribute is incredibly heartwarming. While Delegate Torian could not be here this evening, he wanted me to express his deepest gratitude to the town of Dumfries and Prince William County for this great honor. Because the town of Dumfries has a long, proud history as the oldest continuously chartered town in Virginia. And today we are deeply humbled to know that our family now, will now be part of this rich and meaningful legacy. Whether you've known Luke, and many of you know him, as delegate, pastor, friend or combination of all of those at once, you know his life is devoted to service, advocacy and really caring for others. So on behalf of Delegate Torian, our family, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for this extraordinary honor. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes and then we'll go to citizen comment time.
I motion to approve the meeting minutes.
All right, it's been motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Fields?
Yes. We have citizen comment time coming up. And I have the pleasure of being seated beside the clerk and I'm glancing at the number of people that we have here signed up. At Dumfries, we have a rule, there's a rule on the book. I want to suspend that rule to be able to let everyone speak on the topic that they want to speak on. I'm going to ask, I want to recite the rule, which is five dash one A six of council rules, procedure for meetings. For further clarification, I would ask that our town attorney, let's be clear of the rules so everyone is clear on what the rule currently is and we're going to suspend it for this meeting and this meeting only. Yes.
Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, members of council, honorable members of council and members of the public. The council has a rule that limits our citizen comments to three minutes and two topics that are not on the agenda. By moving to suspend the rule, citizens can now speak on any topic, including matters that are on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Also, along with that, Mr. Mayor. Okay, also along with that, being that we have so many signed up, we're going to reduce it to two minutes, please, instead of three. So we won't be here all night and everybody wants to go home too at some point. But be respectful of that, the clock will be gone by the clerk. So I make a motion that we suspend the rule five, one, A six of council rules and procedure for this meeting. Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
So the motion on the floor is to suspend the council rule, what's, give me the letter here.
Five, one, A six of council rules and procedures.
To allow everyone to speak on topics that's here. Okay.
And change it to two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was going to make the amendment to that, to add the two minutes.
Okay. All right, thank you and I hope everyone appreciates that.
Okay, all right, any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Field?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tim Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
All right, so some people didn't put their subject. Who was here first to speak to the Torian proclamation? Let me see those people because I was looking at the list, okay? I see Mrs. Wilk, can y'all come line up to it first? Because why, Ms. Torian's here. I said, hey Lori? Hey Brian? Okay. All right, was that? All right, Clerk, you can get that. And then just make sure y'all state your names for the record so the clerk can have it for the book and she can mark you off and then we'll get to the next ones. All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Lori Spitzer-Wilk. My husband is School Board Member Justin Wilk. I am a teacher in Prince William County Schools. I've taught here now for twenty-one years and I teach English and theater. And my husband really wanted to be here tonight. He unfortunately though, had to go to Michigan. He had some family matters that he had to attend to. So he sent his better half to deliver his speech for him. So I'm just going to read it for you now. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and neighbors. My name is Justin Wilk and I serve on the Prince William County School Board. I'm here tonight to support naming a local park in honor of Delegate Luke Torian and his wife, Mrs. Clarice Torian, two people who have given so much to this community over the years. Delegate Torian has represented our district in the Virginia House of Delegates since before I was first elected to the board. He has become one of the most respected leaders in Richmond and one of the strongest supporters of public education. As a Chair of the House Appropriations Committee, Delegate Torian helped secure record funding for public schools and made sure teachers receive steady raises of three percent each year. He also supported dual enrollment programs and expanded access to community college, giving more students real opportunities after high school. He once said, "Community college provide access for people to gain the training they need. Please trust me when I say that you matter." That message has always stayed with me. Delegate Torian leads with care and conviction. He sees the value in every student and he works to make sure they are supported. But the story doesn't stop there. Ms. Clarice Torian also served Prince William County Schools for over fifteen years. She started as a Guidance Director and later became the Director of Student Services at Central Office. Her work made a difference in how we support students outside the classroom through counseling, family engagement and making sure every child had what they need to succeed. Together Delegate Torian and Mrs. Clarice Torian have been steady and trusted leaders, not only through their work in education and government, but through decades of service at First Mount Zion Baptist Church. Thank you, he's a little wordy, sorry. Thank you so much.
You did good as a drama teacher. My daughter had her class.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the council. Whoa, this is, this is loud. Tanya James, District Director for Congressman Venman. First, thank you all for being such gracious hosts last night. We had a lot of fun on National Night Out as well as, you know, the mayor had me in the back of a cruiser, it's a little scary, don't recommend it. But I come to you with a letter from the congressman in support of the naming of the park. So I'll just, dear members of the town of Dumfries Council, I write to express my strong support for a vote in favor of naming a local park in honor of Delegate Luke Torian and Mrs. Clarice Torian. This is a meaningful recognition of two individuals whose lifelong service has had a profound and lasting impact on the town of Dumfries and beyond. Delegate Torian's decades of leadership in the Virginia House of Delegates have shaped a legacy of fiscal responsibility, strategic investment and transformative support for infrastructure and environmental renewal. His advocacy has directly led to over four hundred million in state-backed projects for the community and has established long-term stability and growth for the town of Dumfries. Mrs. Torian's dedicated work in education and student services has touched the lives of countless young people and families. Her commitment to wellness, equity and student safety embodies the very spirit of compassion and service that a community park represents. Naming this park in their honor would not only celebrate their individual accomplishments, but also serve as a symbol of partnership, civic responsibility and devotion to a common good. It would serve as a lasting landmark where residents can come together in community, celebrate shared values and honor the enduring legacy of the Torians. I respectfully encourage the council to vote in favor of this proposal. It would be a proud and enduring tribute. Sincerely, Eugene Venman, Member of Congress. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Tyrone Brown, seventeen five nine eight Duke Street, Dumfries, Virginia. I'm not going to regurgitate what I said about Mr. Torian last time we were here. I just come to say that there are some people in the town, Tiffany in particular, just doing a great job, doing a great job. Every time I see it go live, puts a smile on my face, makes me want to be a part of Dumfries. I just want the council and the town manager to know that. Also, Parks and Rec, the summer, the summer series been outstanding. I know that's one of Councilman Pete's things, so keep that up. Keep bringing people to the town, let's make this bigger so we can be a destination people come to. Also, I just want to talk a little bit about the upkeep of the town. We could do a better job with that. If you walk across the street here, there's some grass that's overgrowing the sidewalks. That's in our control, we control that, we're not worried about the money, we can control that. That's going to impact concrete and pavement. We're going to have to redo that stuff if we don't take care of that. So if we can get somebody on that, if we can get somebody on that, that would be great. Also signage. Also signage. When we are marketing these events, signage is piss poor. We can do a lot better than that. I mean, if I look at, if I go on a airplane and signs are falling off, I'm scared. If I go to a restaurant, go to the bathroom, and it's nasty, I'm scared to eat there. When people come through this town, they look at a sign that we're promoting events, they just assume that that event could be represented by that sign. So there's some things that we can take care and clean up, but you're doing a good job. So just continue pushing on, let's make things better. That's all I have.
Good evening, Delegate Candy Munden King of Dumfries, representing the 23rd House District. I just wanted to come to thank the council for the decision that was just made to name the park a very fitting tribute. And I want to take a moment because, believe it or not, I actually represent the Town of Dumfries in the House of Delegates. But Dumfries is known as Luke Torian's baby. He is so proud of the work that is done here, and everyone across the General Assembly knows that if you come for Dumfries, you got to go through Chairman Torian. He is very proud of the work that's done here. But I want to take a moment to really highlight Mrs. Torian. When Pastor and Mrs. Torian retired, we did a little research. Over the years, over nearly three decades, they have fed thousands of families in our community. Mrs. Torian has led efforts that have put school supplies in the hands of children, coats on their back, reformed our educational system. And it is so amazing to be able to honor her and give her her flowers and to see something that is very fitting in tribute to her. So congratulations to you, council members, and thank you so much for honoring the Torians in this way.
All right, we can move to the next topic of people signed up, please. On the historic Dumfries.
All right. First person is Abigail Novatney.
Hello, Abigail Novatney, 2522 Sweet Clover Court, Dumfries, Virginia. I got a lot to say, so I'm just going to try to get through it as quickly as possible. First off, I hope you all are well. I just have a few things to say that I hope you take under consideration. Thank you for opening a dialogue between our leaders and our community on the issue present regarding the Williams-Botts Museum. When you vote on this matter, you are not voting for money, land, or any monetary gain. You are voting for ripping away vital knowledge from our youth and erasing history. Not only do I live in this community, I work directly with the children within it. Do you know how fascinated they were to learn that their school had been built on a Civil War battery? Insanely. They were ecstatic, they cared. But do you know what these kids have told me they do after school for fun? They steal from the plethora of corporate businesses surrounding them. Let's be real. Going to Jimmy T's and exploring their environment that happens to be rich with history is the only age-appropriate things they have to do here. And that's because all we have is a library that is entirely unkept compared to every other one I've been to in Northern Virginia and is right across from a smoke shop and the Rosie's Gaming Emporium. And the best part I've seen, although I'm sure this new one is lovely, is at the elementary school. And someone decided it was a good idea to put right next to that school, lower-income families in the trailer parks, and on top of a landfill, the same landfill that's been mentioned, a casino resort that is actively failing because MGM is just over an hour away. It's unfortunate, and we can do better. Allowing the museum to continue their work as usual onsite would continue to benefit our community. While history may not seem essential, it's the kind of enrichment that we desperately need to keep here. Did you know that there's a shipwreck from the Civil War just off Possum Point? Everything is still on it that the soldiers didn't dump overboard themselves. Isn't that fascinating? Shouldn't that kind of historical find be preserved and researched? And is it not convenient that the Williams-Botts Museum has produced archives that lead to that kind of information? Because I sure would say so. Or how it attracts people to the slave graveyard right next door to it so the impact and depth of the mistakes in our history continues? If we continue to fail to support the preservation of our history, we lose our identity. We lose our lessons. We are the oldest chartered town in Virginia, but looking around, you would never know. Voting to remove the team at the museum is a step in the wrong direction. Our community is already struggling with the quality of living here. And for the sake of our youth, we need to start making decisions in the right direction. The choice you make regarding this will not simply determine the fate of the museum. But if you choose to destroy history by removing a vital resource, knowing our past determines our future. And if we want any hope for improvement, you will make the clear choice that is best for Dumfries, regardless of whether or not it looks good on paper. This is your chance to be a part of our history. If you make the wrong decision, you will be solely responsible for destroying the legacy of this town. Thank you for your time.
Cooper Bentley? Cooper Bentley? And then the next person after that that can line up is Kevin Kavanaugh.
Am I good? All right. Hello, my name is Cooper Bentley. I really just had one question. I actively volunteer at the Freedom Museum in Manassas for the archives, and I was curious as to what's going to end up happening to the, was it the Lee Lansing Research Library, an archive inside of the Williams-Botts Museum at the Annex Building? I just want to know if I could get just a quick comment on that.
We generally don't comment on, we'll get to, we'll have our comment time after everybody speaks.
Okay. Yeah, that's the really funny thing I had today.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, Kevin?
And before you speak, I'm going to go ahead and call up the next two people so they can line up. The next person I have is Patrick Thompson and Nancy West.
Okay, my name's Kevin Kavanaugh. I am the Treasurer for Historic Dumfries Incorporated. Talking about the franchise agreement, here's the original franchise agreement. Was agreed to 27 years, four months, and one day ago. The amendment was amended 22 years, eight months, and 26 days ago. The attorney letter is dated July the 9th, 2025. The attorney letter is an opinion, as she noted, but it's not a valid document, doesn't carry any weight in regards to HDVI. It's a demand letter that HDVI has no intention of complying with at this time. As noted in our legal response, we believe the opinion is flawed since the case cited does not apply to the issue at hand. Based on the town's initial response to HDVI's FOIA request, it appears that the town attorney may have presented a highly misleading statement about the status of the minutes that she used to make the recommendation or opinion. "A court of law can declare a contract or other legal document void, ab initio." I hope I said that right. The town attorney made the opinion that does not require, that therefore the town's attorney's opinion that that does not require legal action is false. The town manager sent a response to our legal response mentioning the interest of transparency. Since the town made this an issue, our question is, what's the issue? That's zero, you've done zero transparency. Vote was taken closed, no prior notification to HDVI, and you deferred everything to staff. Thank you.
Before you speak, I'm going to call the next two people. We have Nancy West and then Ms. Boyd.
Good evening, I'm Patrick Thompson. I'm a member of the Board of Historic Dumfries, also providing legal counsel to the Board. However, at the moment, I'd like to speak as a Dumfries town resident and a voter. We've heard tonight about the desire to grow the business and attract business to the Town of Dumfries. However, as Kevin just noted, at issue here is an agreement that the town made with Historic Dumfries 27 years ago and affirmed several years later. Agreement that the town attorney is now saying was void, was never valid. The town is going to reject that agreement out of hand. What message does that send to groups that would like to do business with the town or who are doing business with the town? If the town is going to throw away its agreement, say they were never going to abide by them, years after the fact? Second, as you've honored our leaders, it made me think about the story drafted just down the hill at the Williams-Botts Museum of George Washington, of promoted the American ideal of a democratic leader who takes responsibility for his actions. When he destroyed something beautiful, he stood up tall and said, yes, I cannot tell a lie, it was I with my little hatchet. And my question here is, are those values, the values that Dumfries helped promulgate to the whole nation, being reflected in the actions that this body has taken towards Historic Dumfries? I fully believe that every one of you can live up to those values of take responsibility for actions and of not, you know, of being the leaders that this town deserves. If the actions tonight and in the future prove that to be incorrect, I hope that this town instead gets the leaders that it deserves.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nancy West. My husband and I moved to Dumfries in 1962. We built our house on the corner of Cameron and Washington Streets in 1966. And when we moved from here in October of 2020 to move to Westminster at Lake Bridge, a retirement community, we had lived in Dumfries 58 years. When we moved to our house on Cameron Street, this violent merchant was still living in her house. I remember seeing her sitting on her porch. I remember seeing her throw her dishwater off that stoop on the side of the house. When this merchant was getting, so she could not live there, she moved to the Hermitage of Northern Virginia, a home operated by the United Methodist Church. When she died, she needed the house to the Hermitage to pay for her keep. Now, Hermitage and the church sold the property. It changed hands several times over the next few years. There was plans for development on that property. It never developed, thank goodness. And then Barbara Kirby, a citizen of Dumfries, was at the courthouse looking through some records for herself when she came across the records for the deed to that house, that it had belonged to Mason Locke Williams, the biographer of George Washington, who wrote the famous Cherry Tree Story. Once that information was available, people became very interested in forming a historical society. Foremost in that was Dr. William and Ms. Anne Florrie of Bel Air Plantation. Bel Air Plantation is located in part of what is now Dale City. The Florries were interested in this because Mason Locke Williams, at one time, because he had married Frances Yule, a resident of Bel Air Plantation. And he is buried on Bel Air Plantation property.
All right, thank you, Mrs. West.
This has been.
Have you sent us the rest of it?
The house was dedicated in 1976, primarily because of all the volunteers that worked to refurbish that house.
Mrs. West?
It has been a jewel to this town.
We have to move on to the next one. In fairness to everybody.
Okay, I'm going to use, I know my time is up, I'm talking off the clock. I'm not going to say anything, I don't know what's happening between the town and the historic society. But what I want to say is, I came into.
We have to move on to the. Okay. All right. I'm going to take a two-minute recess.
Are we ready? Oh, wait for the timer.
Okay. And please, for decorum's sake, because we don't want to have to have anyone escorted out, please, let's keep the time and let's keep the decorum of the chamber. Thank you.
Before you speak, Ms. Boyd, let me call the next two people up as well.
Okay, perfect.
I have Jess Seguin and Mike Alm. Thank you. You're good to go.
Okay, my name is Beatrice Boyd. I live at 17540 Duke Street in Dumfries. First and foremost, I am here to address the issue on Duke Street with no parking signs. I appreciate that when the town, four people came from the town and decided to tell me to take my no parking signs down, and immediately the next day, they came and brought a big bucket of, a big load of dirt, and fixed the easement because they told me it was a misdemeanor. And then I said, oh, really? Because then these easements need to be fixed. So they fixed that one. Now there's easements up and down to Stuke Street where the people are sitting on the property and parking and making mud holes and telling me that it's not their property. It is. You made me fix my easement when I messed it up. And if they can't do it, you're responsible because I don't want to get hurt. Anyway, nobody wants to get hurt. Okay, there are about 10 more homes that need this done, and I would appreciate that this easement's get fixed. And now let me get to the next one, right here. Oh, and initially, the church was denied the due not to enough space in the parking lot for that church at 17775, which is interesting because there's not even enough parking there. They're parking on Duke Street. So the Bates Town one is also an issue because they don't even have enough parking, and they're parking up and down Duke Street. Now what we need to do is, the council allowed this to be voted in back, and as a result, it doesn't make sense. That as a result, the two cars cannot pass safely going up Duke Street off of Route 1. It's not wide enough, and literally cars are parked, directly blocking visibility and of oncoming traffic obscuring the yellow line. This is the third time, and I want this voted on tonight, to get this resolved, because I've done this three times. And I wanted to talk about Abby, but right now, let's just talk, I know I'm over. But this is real important. Chris Brown.
Thank you.
And Lisa Brown have been diagnosed recently, and they were former mayor. And I just want everyone to stop and pray because God can stop for this, to stop. Just say a real quick prayer for their family. And that they would, that their daughter Claire is at peace and making everything coercive and feel good.
Okay.
While they're going.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jeff Segwin. I'm a volunteer with Historic Dumfries, Virginia. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. Some of you might know me as Ghost Jeff. I give the Ghost Tours every October, and a lot of people come to those tours. As a matter of fact, this year, I've got some friends coming in from the United Kingdom. So they're coming over for the tours. Dumfries has done an incredible job of introducing people to history. As a matter of fact, my daughter Ivy, who's watching this at home on YouTube, became interested in history through her volunteer work at the museum. There's so much education, you can tell by the turnout tonight, that people are very passionate about Historic Dumfries, and there's so much great information, not only paranormal information, but information historic, history-wise, related to this area. I live in Centerville currently, but I take the trip all the time to come down here and be a part of the wonderful museum. And I think through all the years, all the different directors that have come through, Abby's doing a fantastic job, and so is this current group of individuals that help support the board. So that's all I've got to say, but I really enjoy my time working with Historic Dumfries, and I look forward to many more years, and I'm excited to hear what the town is looking forward doing. Thank you.
Hi, Mike Alm. Moved here about 10 years ago from a similarly sized community, about 6,000, a community that would love to have the opportunities that the town of Dumfries has. The council and the mayor have done a great job making Dumfries a destination. There's a lot, there's work to do, obviously. But the one thing that has been consistent for the last 25 years was, is the Williams Bots Museum, bringing people in off of 95 and US1. Can't tell you how many times I've heard, you know, people who've stopped by the museum, you know, instead of just passing through the town to learn more about our history, which, you know, the 250th anniversary of our country is next year, so certainly Historic Dumfries plays a huge role in that as the oldest community in the state of Virginia. I just would like to see that the support of the Williams Bots Museum continues for this historic period. So thank you for your time.
All right, the last two speakers, Andrew Mills and Margie, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the, or read the last name, but first name is Margie.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Andrew Mills. I am the president of Colonel William Grayson Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, also author of Haunted Prince William County, whose cover actually has the Williams Bots House on it. As a historian, one of the things that's most important to understand is that our history is a shared story. It's not just one person, it's not just one group, it's everyone. And Colonel William Grayson, one of Prince William County's most famous residents, had a personal motto, which was simply put, "Aut liber, aut nullis," which strictly translated means either free or nothing. But a looser translation is either books, education, knowledge, or nothing. And so as a historian, my greatest concern with any time a historic site finds itself in a position where people would not be able to learn the story, to understand what is being told, it means we would have nothing. We lose this knowledge. In fact, one of the greatest crimes that can ever occur is, every person in this room has a story to tell. Every person has a unique history and knowledge. To not have it preserved in any way, shape, or form is effectively creating a ghost of that lack of knowledge itself. And too many stories are oftentimes forgotten. Today, we ensure the story of Luke and Clarice Torian. We have an opportunity to talk about a story next year of Prince William County, who officially drove out the British from Virginia soil in July of 1776, but it has never been talked about or told. I applaud Mayor Wood for wanting to create a historical advisory committee and hope that next year Dumfries can proudly say, we gave Virginia its freedom from the British once and for all. And so I just wish to remind everyone, if we have no education, we have nothing. Let's not end education tonight. Thank you.
I was a little late, so I didn't get to put my name on this. My name's Paul Critchley. I was born here in Dumfries. Part of Williams Bots has always been a part of me, and to take that out would be like taking a part of me away. That's the only thing that really got going on around here in Dumfries. A lot of people come there, a lot of people do a lot of things. They don't ask why. They don't want to know the bad history about it, which is understandable. But if you're gonna get up there and take out Williams Bots, then you may as well take out the building up the street up here that's been here just as long as the Williams Bots. And former mayor, Chris Brown, the house that he lives in, has been here just as long too. So I guess y'all just gonna have to take, tear everything down in here. So my thing is, leave alone. Let people come enjoy a history of Dumfries, because Dumfries ain't got much more. And like I says, I was born here, and I'm gonna fight as long as I have to. Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is council comments. Councilman Young, do you have any comments tonight?
Mr. and Mrs. Mayor, just want to thank everybody in their support, appreciation, and attendance tonight for the museum. One thing that would encourage Historic Dumfries, as well as anything moving forward, my wife and I moved here three years ago, and since the time of being here, we've had no advertisements, no anything, no nothing at all as far as what's going on there at the Williams Bots Museum. We've had no notifications, no I see, no flyers, no anything. I visited. I was there. But at the same time, I came to understand that, I think it was either this year that you guys held a mini Cherry Blossom Festival. Knew nothing about it. I found out about it by happenstance, by talking to the mayor one day, looking on Facebook for, was it Vintage Dumfries Facebook page, and came across it. I'm like, wait a minute, where did this come from? Knew nothing about it. Then come to find out that there was other events that had taken place there, and the ghost, ghost stories that you were speaking of, never knew anything about it. And we've been living here for the, like I said, for the past three years. I can ask a few other people around my neighborhood, nothing. So like I said, I don't know exactly what the disconnect is when it comes down to advertising to the whole entire community, but I would ask whatever happened, if there is some sort of resolution moving forward, that you guys increased that, or that we find as a town to increase that, so that other people may know. The other thing I have is, I recently came back from a conference, and one of the things I took away from the conference, Councilmember Fields and myself attended, in a statement that was made, it said, invest in people. People invest in the process, and the process will produce progress. My whole thing is that we don't have a problem. I don't think no member up here has a problem in investing in the people in the town of Dumfries. But you gotta trust the process as it goes along in order to see the progress. And Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Peterson?
I would like to piggyback on what Russell said. I have been here three years as well. I live in the same neighborhood as him. Have not had any advertisement or anything on anything going on in the museum. As well as five years, I lived in Forest Park. My daughter went to Forest Park, Grand Park. I knew nothing. So it would be nice if maybe you even came to one of the town meetings and let us know what's going on, and maybe we could be advertised that way. But I'd also like to say, I want to thank everyone who came out to my backpack drive. It was amazing. It was the third one I've had, third year. I mean, it got, it's getting bigger and bigger. We had it here at the town hall. We had kids lined up all the way through the parking lot, so it turned out great. And I also would like to congratulate Russell, me, and I think a couple other staff members who just completed the Professional Development Academy. And things went well. We got a leadership class and certificates. I think it was me, Russell... Our CFO.
CFO and, I believe, town manager.
Town manager, Ray Bonds. And if anyone I missed, I'm sorry, but I want to congratulate you all as well. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Pete?
Oh, thank you there, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for everyone that did come to, backing up off Katrina Peterson's thing with the backpack bash, as we had over, I believe it was close to 500 children that day. We had a good turnout. It was amazing. I want to thank all the seniors that came out and to participate at the 55 and up event that we have. You know, I'm big on the recreational side for our children and for our youth. I also wanted to highlight a couple of saved dates that you can mark in your calendar that's coming up, and August events, on August 6th, which is today, right now, oh, I'm sorry, that's going on right now. We have the Minecraft going on right now, as you speak. It's actually going on at Ginn Memorial Park. It just started at 8:00. You know, the town still moves, even though we're still doing work here. We still have our recreational going on for our citizens there. On the August 9th, we have our Dumfries cleanup. If you want to participate in that, get in touch with the town hall personnel here, and we can see if you guys can get participated in that cleanup there that we have coming up, and starts at 9:00 a.m. at 17757 Main Street on August 9th. Again, we have our, later on that day at 6:00 p.m., we have our second concert of the Summer Concert Series right here at Main Street, at Garrison Park, right behind town hall here, 17749 Main Street. They will be having, we'll be hosting the Chocolate Factory and the Positive Vibration Band there. On August 13th, we have a movie, another movie night out that may be wrapping us up until the kiddos get ready to go to school that following week. We have an Inside, Inside Out 2, August 13th at 8:00 p.m., 8:30 p.m. on Cameron Street, right there at Merchants Park up the street there. It was very close over there, absolutely. Looking to do some increasing of some of participation in events around here, especially in that locality over there. One of the things that I would like to speak on also is the, is the Luke Torian and Clarice Park there. It hit me a little different, right? Because I seen a man that had a vision of wanting to do something here for the town along with the mayor, along with Margie Oders and some other supporters that helped around here, along with some citizens and the fellow council that was there at the time. Thank everyone that participated and had a hand in the shovel. But it hit me, it hit me a little different when we had a gaming emporio coming to the area, and we still had, what was it, maybe over about maybe 90 some acres of space still left there? Eighty, eighty, eighty acres of space in that area? So I was sitting back one day thinking about, what else can we do that's big for this town here? And so a park came about because we wanted to give you guys, the families here in the town of Dumfries, a place to go, a scenic route, to where you can go out and walk the town and look at scenic, different scenic locations of historical along the areas around here. There's even one spot to where you can see the Potomac from up there, the river there. And then we also had another, some more acreage up there, and I'm like, what else can we do to put around here? And then it wanted me to bring to the council, talking of a convention center, because we, you know, I thought that we could have big concerts here and enjoy some southern soul or some country rock up in there, instead of us, it happened to, which we all may agree that there's a lot of traffic when we have to go to and drive to indoor events in other localities. So we wanted to bring that type of things here, and I want to lean that back to say thank you to Mr. Luke Torian and his wife for having big visions for this, not only Prince William County, but also the town of Dumfries, because that enlightened me to have inspiration and big vision also for this town of Dumfries also, which some can also mock and want to know, and they also asked us council members and the mayor also, how are y'all doing the things that you guys are doing down in the town of Dumfries? And it's all starting from a vision, no difference than the historical Dumfries. It's all starting with a vision. So I want to say to, personally to Mr. Luke Torian and to Clarice, thank you for your vision and enlightening the town and the citizens here in Prince William County. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield my comments.
Councilman Fields?
Good evening, everyone. Supervisor Bailey and Delegate King and Mr. Torian have left the building, but I want to thank them for their presence here today. As soon as I walked in the door this afternoon, Mr. West said, hey, what we're gonna do about the elevator being out? And, you know, ladies, she followed me upstairs, and the captain of the police department was right here, so I did let him know to get on it right before you came behind me. So I'm glad we was able to get that taken care of for you all, and hopefully get that thing fixed soon, so we haven't this problem again. Last night, we had a wonderful night out, for national night out, with the police and the community and everything, and I think a representative from Congressman Viman's office spoke very highly of how well the evening went. It went well. It keeps getting better and better every year. For people that came out, and especially for people with the concerns about Williams Bots Museum, where did the information, I even double-checked with my clerk. No one said that the museum is going anywhere officially. No one said that the museum is going anywhere. The museum will remain there and all the contents therein. It's just on managing it. So the clickbait that's in the paper of eviction, I don't know where that came from. Oh, I got into it with some people online about that. Nobody's being evicted. Everything in history and the contents thereof will remain there. It's just gonna be managed differently. Okay? I'm not gonna say too much more on that because there are still more discussions. But be careful about how you choose to get your information, because false information, false narratives come up to be very bad and very deadly. And why I say that? What happened in Danville, Virginia last week to the council member that got gasoline or something ignitable doused on him because somebody was mad at something? We got to be careful how we do this because your elected officials are in danger with bad information because somebody else out in the community gets mad and want to do some harm to them. So we got to be careful about the information that we're receiving and the information that we put out there. I'll put my phone number online anytime. Call me. But this energy that's in here, based on false information, come on, guys, do your homework. I do. So let's have a positive going forward, whatever we do with the Williams Bots Museum. Let's have a positive about it, because you know what's coming up next. In just a few minutes, this lady's gonna give us a wonderful report on Williams Bots HTVI. Am I not correct? And we love her reports. We love the history that she gives out. So don't think for any moment that we want to erase history or get rid of history. It's still gonna be here because I know the importance of it. I've been around in this town for almost 20 years. And I do miss seeing buses lined up at the Williams Bots Museum from people all over the state of Virginia, wherever they come from. I do miss seeing that. So we're gonna get back to that somehow, some way, someday. So rest assured, that's where I stand on that. And I think that's about all I can say.
Chair Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I would like to thank everyone for coming out and sharing their comments tonight, regardless of the topic. We love hearing from our constituents and making sure that we hear from you all and we're able to implement the things that are important to you. I know I did speak during the presentation of the resolution, and I'm sorry that she's not here any longer. I did want to speak more on the service of Mrs. Torian, because although we, she's on the name of the park, and we said a few words by her, but I want to think, I want to say that it is important to remember that those of us are in public service, none of us serves alone. And a lot of times, we're constantly showing up for the community, and while we're showing And while we're showing up for the community, someone has to stand in and show up for the family in ways where we cannot. And she has done that. She has filled that role and she has done it without complaining and she's done it lovingly. And none of our compliments that we've had in Richmond are accomplished. We don't see these things without her service as well. So I do think it's important to shed a, a special light on Mrs. Torian for her service. Um, and with that, I yield.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to begin by again expressing my full appreciation for the work and the legacy of Delegate Luke Torian and Mrs. Clarice Torian. Their contributions to this region and the lives of so many in and around Dumfries are deep, lasting and worthy of recognition. And I'm grateful that we as a town are moving forward with the name that honors that. But I also want to offer clarity around how we got here. Not to rehash conflict or perceived conflict, but to make sure the record reflects the truth of the process. When the naming was first introduced, it came to the council already titled, placed on the agenda without prior discussion or adherence to the naming process that we as a council had agreed upon. That caught many of us off guard, not because of who the name honored, but because of how it was brought forward. And that's where things became complicated. Our initial vote to remove the item from the agenda was not an act of rejection. It was a request for process, for discussion, for transparency. Unfortunately, that action was interpretate, interpreted publicly as opposition to the Torian family, which could not be further from the truth. In the weeks since, we've listened, we weighed the public sentiment, and we did the hard work of compromise. What emerged is the name that we now have moving forward, which is the Dumfries Luke and Clarice Torian Overlook Park, which is a name that reflects both our gratitude and our pride for the town that they helped us to shape. Moving forward, it is my hope that we can all, all recommit to the process that we have in place for naming public places within our town, because fair governance and deep respect can and should always go hand in hand. Again, I thank the family for their commitment to the community. I also thank the community for their, their commitment to communicating with us what their desires are. And I stand by the decision that we made because it reflects both the principles and the progress. In reference to HDVI and the Williams Bots Museum, I want to acknowledge the many messages and concerns that we've received regarding the eviction, and I'm using air quotes for that. But I want to be clear that this is not about erasing history, nor is it about shutting down a museum. What we're doing here, the discussion that's been had, is really about ensuring that our town's historic assets are protected, maintained, and governed responsibly. For years, HDVI has benefited from funding from both the town and the county, often without consistent documentation or adherence to eligibility or reporting standards. In fact, we've learned from, from one of your own board members that tax filings have lapsed for the past two years. Meanwhile, basic maintenance of the building has been neglected. Our staff and council have received emails, have seen misleading narratives in the media, and have watched as this issue has been spun out of the town as evicting history, which is simply not true. The reality is what we're seeking is a governance of structure that ensures transparency, accountability, and long-term preservation of our town's history. And that really is just about stewardship. We have a highly capable staff and we are not looking to exclude anyone. In fact, we welcome collaboration with HDVI's board in order to reach a fair and workable solution. But that solution must prioritize what's best for Dumfries, our community, our legacy, and the generations that will come after us. And we look forward to the collaboration. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As, as we kick off this August council meeting, I want to begin by, uh, first of all, thanking each and every one of you for coming. Everyone who expressed comments, everyone who's been engaged in the process, uh, for your presence in our life and our town, whether it's through us attending our various events through our social channels or just stopping by with your, your questions, your ideas, your feedback. Your presence matters to us. Uh, part of our, uh, vision statement and our, and our strategic plan is to have an engaged citizens. And so you being here is a part of that mission and that vision that we put forth in our strategic plan. First, to, to, to speak to the landfill in the park, uh, that park was purchased and the land was purchased by Churchill Downs, uh, which is a publicly traded company. Uh, the town currently does not own the 80 acres of land, the hotel. That's all public, I mean, that's all privately owned. They have the right to name that park whatever it wants. And it was already, either they already was or they already wasn't a name. Somebody came up with overlook park. We have no clue where the name overlook park came from. But it was there. Uh, the developers said, hey, if you guys send us what you're thinking about, we, we're open. We, we own the park. We have a right to do whatever we want to. And so we just was making a recommendation, uh, that was put it on. So it was on the agenda, but there was no discussion because it got taken off. But over the past month, um, moving on to another topic, I've had the opportunity also to be able to go to summer leadership meetings where mayors, local leaders from across the county gathered to shape and share strategies, innovations, and solutions. I walked away inspired and filled with actionable insights, particularly around housing and housing affordability, uh, around youth engagement and sustainable infrastructure. I've seen some, some great things. Areas that, uh, directly impact the town of Dumfries. And we'll continue to explore how those takeaways can help to shape our future plans and what we have in our, uh, 2044 COP plan. I'm also proud to share that Dumfries has been accepted into the mayor's climate action cohort with 10 other, uh, mayors where we're collaborating nationwide to prepare for the many environmental challenges that we have ahead. As part of this program, I had the opportunity to present on Dumfries' unique climate resilient efforts from stormwater management to green infrastructure needs. Uh, one of the biggest benefits is that at the end of the program, the town is going to receive a fully developed climate action plan at no cost to the town. A huge win for our long-term sustainability efforts. Of course, uh, none of that matters if we're not addressing our residents today. I want to take a moment to address and acknowledge the recent heavy rainfalls that we had over the last month uh, in the town and the flooding issues. Many in our community have endured. We receive, uh, emails. We've seen pictures. We've driven through neighborhoods. And to those of you who deal with property damage or what you feel is unsafe conditions, we, as a council and a staff, we see you and we know how frustrating it can be. Uh, it's not just an inconvenience. It's personal when your home is affected. I want to thank our dedicated public works and our town staff who had to work long hours in the rain, sometimes come out at midnight, uh, when the rains start pouring down to make sure that sandbags and all those things were out. The planning team, the developers, the partners in all those effective areas. As we continue to seek some long-term solutions, uh, and, uh, rest assured, we're committed to addressing this challenge uh, with urgency and empathy with this, this flooding that's going on. We've had, uh, major record rainfalls and record floods in this area. On a lighter note, uh, want to add my echoes of, of congratulations and thanks to our town staff, all our community volunteers and our partners, uh, for pulling off, uh, the multiple and the many events over the last couple of months. Uh, especially the, the backpack giveaway and the national night out. Uh, it's always heartwarming to see all of our neighbors come alive with their families, the laughter, the music, the meaningful conversations with, uh, public safety. Uh, we even had, um, a, a petting zoo out there. And as an all-time favorite, the motorcade that went through the communities that people love. And, uh, you can't beat that. The police coming through with the sirens blare and the kids and the adults and everybody running to the police and not away from the police. And, um, and we're not done yet. Uh, as you heard, Councilman Pete gave you a full lineup of save the dates. Uh, stay tuned to our social media for all of those summer concert dates and those movie dates so that, uh, you can stay abreast of what's going on. Lastly, I'm honored to announce that there is another partnership coming through. Uh, our membership in the African-American Mayor's Association and Bloomberg philanthropies. Uh, we're going to be receiving a grant to launch a mayor's legacy builders program, which is an eight-week journey to help residents protect their home, assets, and loved ones by creating wills, understanding trust, and securing insurance to make a legacy. Uh, the aim of the program is to try to get 100 residents engaged in a state plan and education workshop, families, at least 50 families to try to complete a will or trust, and 25 residents securing an upgrading life insurance. Uh, more information is forthcoming. Uh, we're looking at a, a potential or tentative launch date of Wednesday, September 17th. Uh, so stay tuned. Uh, lastly, today's, uh, food for thought for the mayor is, uh, says strong communities aren't built on perfection. They're built on participation. The more we engage, the more we grow. The more we grow, the more we leave behind a legacy worth inheriting. Thank you, Dumfries. Let's continue to, uh, just show up and show the world what it looks like when a small town dreams big. And with that said, I want to take a quick, uh, five-minute recess.
Let's come to order. Can I have all the economic development candidates that's here to start the lineup at the podium, please? All right. Next on our agenda is the introduction of candidates, uh, for the Economic Development Authority. Each one of you, there will be a clock. Just get to introduce yourself, uh, to the, to the council and to the community. All right. And so the floor is yours. Introduce yourself. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Sheray Harris. Um, and I'm a resident of Prince William County. And I'm here, I put in an application for, um, the Economic Development Authority. Again, I've been a resident of Prince William County for about 13 years. But over the past 20, I've built a career at the intersection of strategy, economic development, and transformation. But before all of that, I'm a girl from Harlem, New York City. I grew up dreaming big, learning to imagine beauty in rough places. And that instinct to look at something and see what it could be, it has followed me everywhere. Before moving to Prince William County, I lived across the Potomac in Indian Head, Maryland. And I remember looking across at Lee Sylvania State Park and wondering why both sides of the river felt so under. the river felt so underdeveloped despite their beauty. I imagined vibrant waterfronts and ferries connecting people and possibilities. And now, years later, I live just minutes from that same park, and the vision of transforming quiet, beautiful spaces into vibrant, connected communities is still with me. Professionally, I've led multi-billion-dollar development projects in aerospace, building engineering centers in Brazil and countries like South Korea, and aligning infrastructure with workforce strategies and business incentives. I've also managed millions of dollars in global community investments, ensuring growth was measured not just by profit, but by the opportunities it created for underserved people and places. And at the heart of all of that has been my commitment to change management. That's helping people navigate the resistance that comes with growth and ensuring transformations actually take root. Serving on the EDA is a chance to contribute locally with that same dedication I've brought to my global projects, helping Dumfries grow in a way that honors its people and potential. Thank you for considering my application.
Okay, thank you.
We're just gonna rock and roll. Come on.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, residents, other attendees. My name is Flavio Garcia, and I've been invited to speak tonight as a prospective candidate to serve on your Economic Development Authority. I've served the public in our nation for nearly 10 years in both the Marine Corps and the Coast Guard Reserve, and I hope to serve this community in a similar fashion. I hold undergraduate degrees in business, accounting, analytics, as well as a master's in taxation. I've held various roles in finance and accounting, and most recently, I founded my own boutique tax and accounting firm. I'm a member of the Prince William Chamber of Commerce and a local investor as well. One of the best parts of military service is the travel, though often to a combat zone, occasionally you get to live in and around communities much like Dumfries. One such community was Somerton, Arizona. It's a small desert town with a single stoplight. When we told our friends and colleagues, they warned us to run the other way. The irony, of course, is that none of the naysayers had ever even spent a minute in Somerton. Maybe this sounds familiar to you. What we discovered was a vibrant Main Street and a local government that hosted festivals, concerts, community events, and then COVID hit, and I saw that same spirit fade almost as intensely as it had once thrived. So I did what any Marine would do. I saw a crisis and I got to work. I called, I emailed, and I showed up to City Hall. Eventually, I secured an unpaid internship in the Economic Development Department, ironically because they didn't have room in the budget for volunteers. And some of the most rewarding work I've ever done was walking down that Main Street in my business casual and leather shoes under the 113-degree Arizona sun, helping minority-owned businesses apply for COVID grants. In my cover letter, I introduced an overarching strategy aimed at encouraging people to stop, linger, and engage. And while I'd love to take credit for that catchy concept, it is in mine. It's a strategy I've seen work firsthand and one that we can make work here in the town of Dumfries. With that, I sincerely thank you for your time and consideration.
This is fun, kind of like speed dating, right? Quick, quick. My name is Bud Wilson. My wife and I own a construction company off Possum Point. We lived in Montclair for 25 years. I'm interested in joining the council. I have an extensive background in project management, technology management, advanced degrees from George Mason University in both. We've had a construction company. We do residential, commercial, federal, DOD support. I have extensive background also in data analytics, cost-benefit analysis, and currently support a group of investors in the Fredericksburg area on projects up to $30 million. And if that's something that could be of help to you guys, even if I'm not selected, I'd be happy to make introductions. Maybe be a good source of funding for you guys in some of these projects you've been talking about. So that's pretty much all I have to say, cut and dry. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, council members, fellow citizens. My name is O'Kelly Russell. I'm a resident in the town of Dumfries. I've lived here since July 4th, 2000. I'm grateful for your consideration to serve on the Economic Development Authority. As a licensed landscape architect and arborist with experience in planning and sustainable design, I've worked on many projects in the greater Washington area that work to balance economic opportunity and sustainable design. Locally, I've served on the Dumfries Planning Commission and the Architectural Review Board, where I've gained a deep understanding of our town's development priorities and cultural identity. I believe Dumfries is a pivotal, is at a pivotal moment, ready to grow in ways that honor its heritage and embracing innovation. My hope for the Economic Development Authority is promotion of a responsible growth that integrates green infrastructure, supports diverse businesses, and enhances the quality of life for its citizens. An example of this could be using pedestrian trails and green spaces to connect the neighborhoods to foster civic pride and to attract investment. I'm here tonight because I believe in Dumfries. I want to help shape the future that's economically strong, environmentally sound, and deeply rooted in community values. Thank you for your time.
I think O'Kelly forgot to say he was a founding member of the Parks and Recs Commission, and his architectural firm volunteered their time in designing Gin Memorial Park, as you see it, so he did the layout and the infrastructure design for that, so.
Good evening. Thank you for having me and holding space for me today. I'm excited to be applying to the Economic Development Authority in the town of Dumfries, where I currently reside as and work as a licensed clinical social worker and small business owner. I have a master's degree in social work and have obtained more than seven years of experience working in the field of social work, focusing primarily on transforming communities on the micro, meso, and macro levels. I've been serving local communities on a nonprofit level while supporting the growth and development of social programs that foster, help foster, healthy community and positive connection through evidence-based practices. I have a background in grant writing and management, nonprofit partnership, coordination, as well as community outreach. In addition to service to the community on the meso level, I'm also passionate and experienced in working with individuals and families on the micro level, supporting in their growth and healing through mental illness and reconnecting to community. Through my education and service to community, I've learned the importance of pie theory. I'm not referring to the yummy kind of pie that spikes our blood sugar, but instead, the pie theory that understands the impact environment has on a person. Pie is the way we understand and speak about the complex problems people face in terms of their social functioning and the importance of how their environment plays a role in shaping this. As a social worker, small business owner, and person and environment enthusiast, also a prospective member of the Economic Development Authority, I offer a unique and valuable perspective on community, social, as well as physical needs, at what a town can do to thrive, as well as set itself apart from other towns and communities, thereby attracting a balanced, diverse workforce and businesses, the basis for sustainable economic development of the town of Dumfries long term. I look forward to working with the town of Dumfries to intersect economic, social, and program development through this pie-centered paradigm, fostering positive, lasting, and impactful change within our local community. This is a passion of mine to continue to serve community and development in a pro-social, positive way. Thank you. Brittany Jesseran.
My name is Jürgen Van Dyk. I'm a business owner here in Dumfries for the last 20 or so years. I'm also a citizen, so I have a vested interest in Dumfries becoming a strong, viable economic town. And I see the importance that we have to, we have, as being a small town, you have to use everything you have to set yourself apart. My history is in, I develop properties, commercial as well as residential, and I'm a serial entrepreneur. So I think I understand what attracts businesses, what their needs are, as well as what people need to live. So I hope that that is enough for you guys to maybe part of this team. Not a very good speaker, but I think you know my history. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, next on that agenda is going to be the treasurer's report for my town treasurer.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Protem, and Member of the Council. I'm here to present Town of Dumfries Port Court of the Treasury Report for fiscal year 2024 and 2025. The first page, I have checking, savings, and Virginia Investment Pool account beginning balance as of April 1st, 2025, all the deposits the town has received, all the disbursement, and the total town fund as of June 30th, 2025 was $12,158,808.54. Page three, the next page, we have revenue, revenue and expenditure summary. The total deposit was $3 million, $3.5 million. The total disbursement was $2.3 million, and the net cash flow was $1.2 million. Revenue key categories, the property taxes, we have collected $900,000. Gaming taxes, we collected $1.3 million. Meal taxes, we collected $285,000. Sales tax, we collected around $157,000. Page four, five, six, seven, and eight, all the deposit the town has received, description of the deposit and the amount. And then we have page nine through 13, all the disbursement, vendor paid amount, and the description of the amount. Any questions? Thank you.
Council, any questions? Okay, seeing that. Thank you for your thorough report and your fiscal responsibility. Thank you for the growth and development, and even some of the things that you have presented on the consent agenda today to help us ensure that we're getting more funding in. Thank you. All right, I want to go back. The clerk is going to read a statement from somebody who had sent it in, who couldn't be here for the EDA read-up. Madam Clerk.
Okay, so I just received the email from one of the candidates for the EDA position, which is Mr. Lawrence Nickerson. He's stuck in traffic, so he was not able to get here on time. His email states, "I am sending this email to respectfully let you and the town council know that I will not be able to attend the meeting tonight because I am stuck in traffic on the Beltway coming from Montgomery County, Maryland. Accidents on both sides of the highway. Since I will not be able to personally address the council, I wanted to provide a little information on myself. For those that don't know, I am a master electrician who has been in construction for over 42 years and have managed construction projects from the ground up, retrofit work, remodel projects, and maintenance contacts. I have worked in residential, commercial, and industrial fields, and I have seen projects through to their completion from the bidding process, material acquisition, working with procurement, as well as managing the manpower to make sure that projects meet their sometimes strenuous timelines. The main reason I am asking to be considered for this board is because I want to do my part to assure that this board makes decisions that are in best interest for Dumfries economic growth and development, also helping to ensure that decisions are made with an analytical and logistical sound approach. I appreciate the council considering my application to be appointed to the EDA, and if appointed, I vow to serve in this position with integrity and loyalty to the call of work that we'll be charged to do. Have a great evening."
Okay, next on our agenda is the presentation from Historic Dumfries, Inc.
Hi, I'm Kristy Barcalow, and I am the president of Historic Dumfries, but I'm also a retired school teacher. I taught at Grand Park Middle School for 31 years, and I usually like to start with a lesson on history, and I was originally going to tell you, I guess, all about how because of Dumfries, smallpox did not win the Revolutionary War. But you'll have to wait for another time for me to explain why Dumfries helped to win the revolution, because I wanted to share with you about my experience in June, when I attended the State of the Town Address by the mayor. And he explained the town was like a family, and everyone was invited to the table. And as I sat there, I sat right over there where Mrs. Washington's sitting, and I said, "I feel like we're the weird cousin. I feel like HDVI is the weird cousin that everybody's kind of hoping doesn't show up." And after the address, we went over to the other room for refreshments, and I talked to the mayor's wife, because she taught at Grand Park Middle School with me. And so we were chatting, and I said to her, "You know, I feel like HDVI is the weird cousin." And she said, "No, no, 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 no. The mayor really, you know, respects HDVI. You guys are not the weird cousin of the town of Dumfries." I was like, "Okay." But then, on July 25th, as I was riding home from my father-in-law's funeral, speaking of family, I got, I got the letter from the town attorney. And that was July 25th. They voted on it July 1st, but we didn't receive it until July 25th. And I read, it said, "The town will contact you to coordinate the orderly transition of its property back to town control by August 15th. The town thanks Historic Dumfries in advance for its cooperation and willingness to conduct a full inventory and assessment of the town's property and develop a written plan to transition it back to the town." I was like, "Oh, my gosh. We're not the weird cousin. We're the great-grandpa. We're great-grandpa who keeps telling all these horribly old stories." And everybody's secretly going, "When is he gonna die?" But you know what? When great-grandpa does die, all that history is gone. All the materials, all the items that great-grandpa had, it's gone. And we need to think about that, because everything in the Williams-Botts House and the museum belongs to Historic Dumfries, belongs to people of the town who donated to Historic Dumfries. The town, when they said they wanted their property back, they wanted control of their property, my first thought was, "Oh, what are we going to do with all our stuff?" So I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, who's going to explain this further.
We heard during common time about trusting the process. So let's talk about what the process has been over the last 27 years. There was an agreement made between Historic Dumfries and the town back in 1998, under which we have paid tens of thousands of dollars, which we have faithfully served the town in promoting its history to the broader community, preserving its history, and under which we've functionally been acting as tenants in both the Locket House and the Williams-Botts Museum. On July 1st, there was a vote going to close session under the grounds of probable litigation. We're not aware of any probable litigation. We have no feud with the town, but during this closed session, there was a vote to send us a letter. And as Kristy described, we received the letter. And there's been questions about misinformation. We'd asked that that letter, as well as our applied letter, be added to the record so that everyone in this town could see exactly what was sent and exactly what was said. In that letter, as you read, it says, all of a sudden, they're seeking the orderly return, orderly transition of the property back to the town. And the basis given for that is a claim that the records taken by the town back in 1998 and 2002 were somehow insufficient, that somehow this council's own sloppy record-keeping lets it invalidate an agreement upon which we have relied for decades. Now, we have sent a FOIA request to the town requesting the records to find out whether that, that opinion is correct. We have yet received the documents to know whether or not that is, in fact, a factually correct statement, and we also have questions about whether it's a legally correct statement based on the analysis being given. So based on that, we would also note that it would be impossible for us to transition by the 15th as demanded by the town, because, as you've heard, there's a substantial amount of property that belongs to HDVI or which is on long-term loan from third parties, and it'd be impossible for us to sort through that before the 15th in an orderly fashion. And any unilateral action by the town to take back control of the museum would likely cause damage to sensitive materials. So we ask that the town not take unilateral action and that we have the process in a way that is appropriate, public, open for public discussion. and that we have the process in a way that is appropriate, public, open for public discussion and that in the spirit of that, the item on the agenda today, that'll be consent item number D, be removed from the agenda because it is based on a false premise. It is based on a premise that this is already a done deal. Whatever happened behind closed doors, a closed session settles the matter. But the town has, we don't know what's happened. We don't know what decision's been made and we're just going to take all, and actually find out exactly what the process is. And that's why we're saying that we want the town to remove that from its agenda and enter our letter, as well as the town attorney's letter into the record so that we can have no misinformation, but just accurate information available to public about exactly what's happening here. And that I pass the lectern to Abby.
Thank you. I mean, because of this sort of unorthodox meeting, I wasn't able to prepare a report, especially since we're in the middle of a quarter. But yes, we do this weekend coming up have scout camp for archaeology. I just want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing and what we do at the museum. We, I mean, yes, we did have the Cherry Tree Blossom Festival, which was a huge success. I mean, we had about 300 people come and that was advertised. I was getting calls about that all week leading up to it. And we, I mean. Oh, yes, yeah, we did a book exchange for Charter Day. That one was on Mother's Day, so the turnout wasn't as great. But I mean, we had a lot of people come back multiple times throughout the day to keep bringing us books and taking more books. So I think it was a great success. And I mean, I've heard that we aren't open. I've heard that nobody knows what we do. I mean, we do try to advertise this as best we can because of our budget. We haven't had an advertising budget in the past, but that is new on our budget this year. So we are hoping to pay for advertising and I have paid for advertising out of my own pocket for some of these various, including ghost tours, including the Cherry Blossom Festival. I mean, just because I love it here, I love Dumfries. I don't want to be from anywhere else. And I mean, if you all want to come to the museum, I'm there five days a week, Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 6. So just come by, I mean, I'm there.
So I just wanted to add one more thing because I am a teacher and we have one minute left. We do have field trips. So our museum, as Abby said, is open Wednesday through Sunday. We have scheduled tours Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 11 o'clock, 1 o'clock and 3 o'clock. And then Wednesdays and Thursdays, we keep them open for school field trips. And I invite you to come to one of our fourth or fifth grade field trips because, are you smarter than a fifth grader? Come, do the fifth grade field trip and see what, you know, they're doing. You get to build a boat and race it. So come on, come to our field trip, see what we're doing. It was brought up that you guys don't know what we're doing. We have pulled our hair out trying to advertise. We have a Facebook page. Abby said, "We paid for advertising when we had the budget." Sometimes she's paid for it out of her own pocket. We are on Eventbrite. Many of the people here I've seen at our events because they've seen us on Eventbrite or they are on our Facebook page, we advertise as many places as we can. I feel like I'm pulling my hair out because I tell, I send you guys the minutes. We sent beautiful invitations for our annual meeting. We sent beautiful invitation for our tea party last fall. And it seems like we don't get a response from you all. So we're just as frustrated, I think, as you guys are in how to let, how to work together and make sure you guys know what we're doing. And there's 15 seconds left, anybody else want to say? Thank, oh, Kevin.
Ran out of time, but the mayor did.
Yeah, 10 seconds. The mayor showed up to our annual meeting, thank you, Mayor.
If I had an extra minute, I could have finished, but long story short, we know, we know that the board member was Salonia. We put her on the board and she came to one meeting and we haven't heard or seen from her since. So whatever you guys did behind closed doors, we, I mean, it's.
Okay.
I'm not even going to finish since.
All right, so we'll go to council for any questions or comments. And Chair Protem, I know you're up there, do you want to, do you have any remarks?
Yes, I do. Because of the decorum, we don't respond to personal attacks, so I'm going to keep that same decorum. I do want to say, just for clarity, there is no one that is evicted in Historic Dumfries. Where that was never what was brought up. Second of all, the only action that is before the council tonight is the modification of the grant, which has already been voted on. And the only reason for that is because it was already agreed upon that the town was going to be taking over the maintenance of the building and a significant portion of the requests dealt with maintenance of the park and of the building. So being that the town had adjusted and made budget arrangements within the budget to take care of those things that were no longer going to be the responsibility of Historic Dumfries, there's a modification to the grant and that is the only action before the council tonight. Where we caught this, you're being evicted and everything else, I don't know. I would encourage y'all to reach out to the staff, thank you.
Counselman Fields, any remarks? Counselman Pete?
No comments at this time, ma'am.
Okay. Counselman Young?
No, sir.
Can you have some?
I do have one. I know we talked about marketing and advertising. Maybe when you all do some advertising, we got plenty of emails this week. Maybe if you could email us your activities, we can post those on our social media page. Oh, okay. Yeah, I know I haven't received any. I think I got the invitation for the tea party, that was a paper one. But if you can send it to me, I know I'll post it on mine. So that would help me know, you know, what you all got going on over there.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
So I know I haven't spoken to her tonight, so I just want to take a moment to speak from both my head and my heart, not, not just as a mayor, but someone who believes deeply in, as you said, inviting everybody to the dinner table, the power plays people and what we got going on. As a small town, I believe Dumfries thrives when we lead with communication, collaboration and care. And not just managing policy, but managing relationships, legacy and community trust. And while I support the goal behind what we're doing with the transition, I want to be clear on why I did vote no because I believe that the process and how we were going to do it mattered. I wanted it to begin as I promised when I came to your board meeting. And I did express this, that I promised I would come back with a roundtable discussion. But I have to go with the will of the council, so the roundtable discussion could not happen, all right? So I wanted to keep my word and that standpoint when I came to your board meeting. So I came to your board meeting, I said I would come back in that process, you know, with a conversation and not the confusion that we're having right now around this. So to our friends at Historic Dumfries, I hear your frustration and I hear your fears. I recognize and I want to acknowledge the decades of volunteerism, the storytelling, both the ghost walks and the other stuff that goes on. The sweat equity that you have put into preserving the Wiensbot Museum, the Locket House and Merchant Park. Your contributions have been helping to bring Dumfries' story to life. But I encourage you, as I've done from the beginning in all our conversations, to just take a second look at what was sent and what was said. Because this was never an eviction notice. I think this was an invitation, all right? We more or less wanted to have an invitation to really just shape the next chapter, where we go in this. Not apart from the town, but from my standpoint, I saw us as we coming alongside and us working together. You know, based on our subject matter experts and our legal representation, it's our responsibility to ensure our assets are managed in accordance with how we're supposed to manage the assets. And we had a more responsibility to ensure also, I believe, the spirit of the partnership stays intact. I think in that cause, I think the second part of the letter talked about Historic Dumfries Advisory Committee, which ensured that that history is not erased, but we continue to kind of elevate that with your voice still having a seat at the table, you're still invited to the dinner table. Okay, as we move forward, I hope that we can rediscover what has always made Dumfries special. And neighbors continue to talk to neighbors, people continue to put pride in our town and the history being honored, not just in building, but the history in these relationships and the over 50-plus years relationships that we've had together. So I hope that from this, the action that we can take is we can have a, just to sit down, a special meeting with us all together to talk about the process and what can go forward. So that's my feelings from my heart and my head as someone who have come over and actually participated. So those are my comments as we move on to the next one. And again, the consent agenda item is about the budget, just removing the maintenance and moving the maintenance to our line item so that we can begin to manage the buildings and get it up to, up to par. So it's just the maintenance and the building line item. All right. That said, seeing no further comments, we will move on to the consent agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, is there anything we need to do? Okay, so I think we need to put a dollar amount on that item. So there needs to, in that motion, needs to be a dollar amount for what's going to be spent on that line item, D.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it, it's a question, not a motion, but are we in discussion, Todd, with that now?
Yeah, I think there was a motion and a second. Is it a point of clarity or I missed it?
Yes, sir, just a point of clarity on the consent agenda. If there is any discussion with respect to an item, it should be pulled off and go up to the action item.
Okay, so you got to pull that off and to put them out. Vice Mayor?
But can we pull it off at this point? Because we amended the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting and we pulled off what we wanted to discuss. So at this point, isn't it, it's not too late to pull something off the consent agenda?
It's not considered a motion, ma'am. The rules actually prohibit discussion on consent agendas. So if there's a question or comment, it just rolls to another part of the agenda where that particular activity is allowed. And every member has the option of doing it. It doesn't require a second. It's just, consider it your point of privilege.
So what I heard the clerk say is that we need to put a number.
Right, but that would require you to, first of all, look at some documents, evaluate what you're going to do and maybe discuss it. And so the motion that is presently on the floor is just to move to approve the consent agenda in one vote. And it was seconded, so in order for us to get to that, there won't be any, there really can't be a separate discussion on something that's sitting in the consent agenda. You just have to pull it out.
Okay.
It's not a procedural hiccup with respect to your motion to amend the and approve the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, so then we move forward with approved. So we take the, we take the vote to approve the consent agenda and then in the discussion, we pull it out and add a number to it?
No, what you would do is you would pull it out, the consent agenda, before you go ahead and make the vote on the consent agenda.
So then I need to redo the motion?
No, just say, someone just needs to say, "I want to pull this out for action item." That's all it takes.
So somebody wants to pull it out?
I'll do it, I got you. I was lit up, ready to do so.
Okay.
Yes, approving, moving, item number, item.
What is it?
What is it? D, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. Okay, approve minus D. Just want to remove D and then we can approve. And move to action item, please.
All right, I moved it to C. All right, any other discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve the consent agenda. And it was motion by Vice Mayor, who seconded it?
I do, second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing that, Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Protem Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
All right, first action item is a public hearing on consideration of ordinance amending Article 1, Chapter 14, repealing and replacing Sections 14-4 through 14-11 of the Code of Building Ordinances, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, servability and effective date. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have two ordinances for public hearing tonight. One ordinance repeals, amends and replaces an existing ordinance and the second ordinance is a new regulation. These ordinances are proposed as a part of the comprehensive review of the town code, which was undertaken to ensure the code is up to date with state law and also to meet the current needs and practices of the town. As in the past, I will provide a brief overview of the ordinances and try to answer any questions you may have regarding them. The first ordinance amends Article 1 of Chapter 14 by repealing Sections 14-1 through 14-11 of the town code and replacing Sections 14-1 through 14-10. In combination, this ordinance repeals the current text of 14-1 through 14-10 of the town code and those sections are restored or replaced by amendments. All of these sections deal with the business, the building code, excuse me. Sections 14-1 through 4 are substantially new and replace the current 14-1 through 14-4. 14-1 now clearly states that the town's code is, adopts the Virginia Unified Statewide Building Code as the town's building code. 14-2 expressly establishes the building department, specifies that the building official has administrative and enforcement authority, but it also enables the town council to enter into an agreement with the county to perform any of the building code's functions by agreement with the county board of supervisors. 14-3 gives the building official the authority to establish rules and regulations that he deems necessary to assist him in the effective enforcement of the building code, but only after the review and approval by the town council. 14-4 provides for civil penalties and processes. At Section 14-5 through 14-10, these are the same or substantially the same as currently written. Most of these sections, as I said, were exactly the same except with respect to 14-10. 14-10 was renumbered from 14-11. And just for your edification, the current 14-10 has been permanently repealed because the town does not have a building board of appeal. These.
Madam, can you repeat that last statement? I just want to make sure I heard you right.
Yes, so at the current Section 14-10, there was a confirmation within the planning and building departments that we do not have a board of appeal and that section referred to it, and so we just struck it.
Oh, because we have a board of zoning appeals?
That's correct.
We don't have a board of appeals, got it.
So these, these ordinances were designed to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of government and also to bring the town code into compliance with state law and regulations. Based on these purposes, which I believe are achieved by the draft, I recommend adoption. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Okay, council, any questions? I'm just curious on, do we have a, like when we repeal a bunch of old ordinances and we begin to update them, do we have a, like an education process or a community? process or a commu- communication process? Like how do we plan to, to educate, especially like the, the small businesses and the micro entrepreneurs about this? Like how do we get out that we now have a, a new definition? And then kind of like, does this affect those who are currently licensed or those who might have been misclassified because of the older definitions?
Well, if you look at this particular section as it's currently written, we have very few definitions and they amazingly don't appear in this particular section of the code. It comes in subsequent sections, which have not been amended as of yet. With respect to what we have in place in terms of education, I would not call it education per se, because these ordinances are advertised in advance before the public hearing, we are providing some notice to those people who might be interested in this particular section of the code that changes are being considered and may be forthcoming. I do think that in some ways, by making sure that the code expressly says that we are adopting the Virginia statewide building code, people who rely on this section are a little bit better off than they were before, because then they know that if they have knowledge of the build, the statewide building code, that's going to apply across the board in the town. The current language in our Town Code just says that the statewide building code can be enforced in the town, not necessarily that all of the provisions would be applicable, but it can be. So this actually gives some degree of comfort and uniformity as to how we can proceed in our enforcement processes, and it will give some degree of assurance to a builder or someone who relies on those sections, that they understand what our limits would be in terms of what we can do.
So I guess, to, to, to anchor the question, I guess, is there a grace period for the outreach? If we have a, a older, like people who, you know, we, we got an intersection that's out of code, right at the corner of Curtis and what's his name, that, you know, so like how do we now go and say they need to be in compliance with the state code because that's what we've now adopted? So like how do we outreach and, and make that enforce?
I think that's a great question, Mr. Mayor. And so we can, we can think about ways to sort of put the word out. Again, I think that with respect to this particular part of the code, very little has to be done because the benefits really sort of, that are conferred are to the members of the public who may be unsure as to how current language can be enforced. But as we go through the other sections of Chapter, Article One, where things are very particularized to the town, having that extra outreach would be very beneficial, and that's something that we can address and bring back to you in those discussions.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the spirit and the letter, like the intent and then what we're going to do, you know, as we, we create these that we can accomplish. So that's.
Yes, sir.
Alright, seeing no more questions, I will now open up the public hearing for this. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, signed up to speak at the public hearing for this ordinance amending Article One, Chapter fourteen, repealing and replacing Sections fourteen dash one all the way up to fourteen dash eleven of the Code Ordinances Building?
No, sir.
Alright. Seeing nobody signed up, I would now close the public hearing. Alright, council, any questions or actions you want to take on this? Okay, see, yes. Mr. Young?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consideration of the ordinance amending Article One of Chapter fourteen, repealing and replacing Sections fourteen dash one through fourteen dash eleven of the Code of Ordinances, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances and servability.
I second.
Alright, so it's been motion and second to approve the resolution ordinance, sorry, to approve the ordinance for that article and second. Alright, any further discussion? Standing up, Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Proton Miles? Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion's passed.
Alright, next on the agenda is a consideration of, a public hearing for a consideration of ordinance amending Article One of Chapter fourteen to provide for violation and penalty providing the repeal of the conflict of orders and servability. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The second ordinance was briefly, briefly referred to in the first ordinance. This is a, a new Section fourteen dash eleven. It covers the town's ability to enforce and penalize violations of the building code, and they bring our enforcement and penalties in line with state law and the uniform statewide building code. In paragraph C, what's made clear is that the count, town now has to elect how it's going to proceed. It's either going to proceed on, as a criminal misdemeanor, which is provided by law, which we currently provide for, or as a civil, civil enforcement, but not both. And so with respect to this particular proposed ordinance, the penalties that are outlined fall in line with the state law. The, the civil penalties that can be imposed fall in line with the statewide building code. Currently, some of our penalties exceed those amounts that have been approved or allowed by state law. So again, the purpose of this particular section is not only to enhance enforcement and efficiencies, but also to bring our Town Code into compliance with the state code, which I believe is accomplished here. And on that basis, I recommend the adoption of this ordinance. Happy to answer your questions.
Counsel, any questions? My question is almost, falls similar in line to the last one, but, but this one now, i- is this consistent with other towns outsides to, to implement a penalty structure on their, their business?
Right now, we have a penalty structure, and if, as I said before, some of our penalties actually exceed what the state law says, we can actually charge for certain violations. So while there may be different things, processes done in other towns, my primary consideration was to make sure that our, our, our regulations were in line with state law and did not exceed the, the authority that we were given with respect to these penalties.
You know, and as a small town, you know, it, it goes back to, again, to like education. Will there be some education and outreach? I mean, I know we got strip malls that have been sitting vacant, and it's probably all kinds of building issues that they have over there. And so I just want to, you know, make sure we have some type of outreach and some notice before we just go around and the building officials just go around to all these buildings issuing a penalties. You know, I want to be able to make sure we're communicating with all of these people before, yeah.
So I, again, I think the benefit that's immediately conferred is there are more sort of process or procedural rights being given with these amendments than we currently have. So there won't be anything that operates immediately as a detriment to someone who might be cited for a violation. Your points are very well taken on the education part of this, but this is still sort of the broadly written section of this article. As we move through like the maintenance code, the rental inspections, uh, section where the rules are very specific, I think those educational requirements are going to be absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Alright. At this time, we, okay, Vice Mayor?
One of the concerns that I have is we have businesses that are in our town that are out of compliance, and we have processes that are in place for enforcement that are so slow-moving that business owners have said, it is in the best interest of my business to continue to operate against the penalties because I make more money than the penalties cost me. And when that happens, you have citizens who then come and say, okay, well, you all are continuing to allow businesses to operate outside of compliance, against the rules, against the law. So then why should I follow the rules and the laws when you have other businesses who don't? I want to see us get to a place where we can have enforcement that is steadfast, because if we have enforcement that drags on so much and a business owner can legitimately, and I say legitimately because if it's a business decision to continue to operate against the enforcement because it is more financially advantageous for them to just pay a fine than it is to comply, then what is the point in us having these processes in place?
Well, that's a little bit of a loaded question, but.
Absolutely is a loaded question.
But the key is, there is all, there are, always will be people who press the limits of the regulation. The regulation really sort of benefits the, the masses that don't mind being governed or conforming their behavior to what the regulations are. There's always going to be that outlier who's going to push the limit, and as you've said, the cost benefit analysis for them makes it very easy for them to continue the violation. As we're going through, we're trying to make sure that we are incorporating those provisions that the state law allows us to adopt, which tries to get around that because it happens. And it happens in, with building codes and zoning codes and things of that nature. So if you look at some of those penalties, you know, they get more enhanced after you have a certain number of convictions within a, a defined period of time. So that hundred dollars maybe for the first offense could climb to ten thousand dollars or, you know, I'll just say five thousand dollars is the, the number I remember if you get three within a certain timeframe. So there's that aspect of it. And then some of the enforcement then falls on the people who are actually doing the job of enforcement. So you have the rules to enforce, you've got to enforce them. And you have to enforce them in a way that gives meaning to the word as opposed to, you know, the uniformity helps. You don't want to have spotty.
Consistency.
Yeah, the consistency. You don't want to have spotty enforcement. And you don't want people to look at a rule and wonder if it, it's going to be applied to me. So all of those things build, but you start with a good foundation, and that's a good regulation, and that's what we're trying to put in place right now.
Thank you for that. Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you, sir.
Any more? Okay, we will now open the public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending Article One, Chapter fourteen, to provide for violation, penalty, and repeal of conflicting. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Alright, with that said, I would now close the public hearing. Alright, any further discussion or comment? No? I close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Article One of Chapter fourteen to approve, to provide for violation and penalty, providing for the repeal of conflicting orders of reability on this effective date.
I second.
Alright, any discussion? Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, just, may I just correct the record? The title for this one is just to provide for the violation and penalty.
Okay. What did you say, Mr. Young?
Isn't that what you said?
Okay.
I, I think you read the title for the first one. That's it.
I read it.
Okay. Can you reread it for the record? Just for the record?
Okay.
To restate the question?
I just wanted to make sure that, I, I thought I heard part of the first title.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir. I apologize.
And I second it.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
Alright. Any discussion? Seeing none? No more discussion? Please call for the question.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pete?
Yes.
Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Proton Miles? Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
That motion has passed.
Alright, next is a discussion for the modified grant award appropriation for historic Dunfries due to circumstance and purpose. Alright, so I guess, I guess we have a, a document before us. I don't know, Mr. Curtis, do you want to speak to it? The, I'll speak to, to, I have a little background here. No, no, I was, I was talking to our finance director, our chief finance officer, um, to your grant application. Do you have your notes? Or no?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Chair Proton, Town Council. I believe you have before you a quick memo. I'm just not going to go through all of it, just highlight the sums of, the sum of it. Simply put, the HDVI or Historic Dunphy, Virginia and the Watch Bottom Museum applied for grant funding. The initial application was about seventy-three thousand dollars, because a large, a large portion of that was because of the lost funding and revenue from Prince, Prince William County. The council approved a funding of twenty-three thousand dollars, similar to what was funded in fiscal year 2025. So currently before you is the funding at twenty-two-three thousand. At the recommendation of the town manager, we are recommending that the funding is twelve thousand five hundred. And that is because of the funding that we are doing to take care of, of the buildings and the maintenance. And I stand ready to address any questions you may have.
Alright, so the only difference in this cost is the maintenance, which the, the county is absorbing in their budget. As far as their, all of their program and expenses and all of that, that all remains the same with the, with the twelve-five?
We believe that we'd be able to do, the twelve-five would be able to do that, the twelve thousand five hundred would be able to do that.
Okay. Councilman Fields?
For the record, what's the amount or rough amount that the town is obligated to take care of now or proposed?
Right now, the council in the 2026 adopted budget, proposed, uh, adopted, allocated twenty-three thousand dollars, and that was the only allocation that the town had. Now there are various other.
I'm talking about maintenance.
Maintenance. Okay, oh, for the maintenance costs. Those various maintenance costs are throughout the entire budget, mostly under the public works. And if I can get to my budget, maybe I can outline it, but I can also provide that for you as far as list for you. I don't have it at the current moment, but I could provide it for you.
Would that take long?
Sure. It might. I would prefer, maybe Tiffany might have it.
There was thirty thousand remaining.
Thirty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. So the town is taking care of that, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. I just wanted out there for the record.
Alright, any other discussion? Town Attorney, you guys up? Councilwoman Peters?
No.
Oh, oh, you're sneezing. Okay. Alright, was there? Any other discussion? And so this was pulled out the consent agenda because we needed to put a dollar amount to it.
Or the same?
Yes. Okay, any other discussion? No?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the grant request to the amount of twelve thousand five hundred.
Second. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, please call for the question.
Before the question's called, should there be public comments in this review for consent to add items? There should now be...
No, sir. No, sir. This is out of order. It's not a public, it's just a grant application. It's not a public hearing item of ordinance.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pete? Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Myles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Um, yes.
That motion's passed.
Next item on the agenda is closed session. The town council of Dumfries is asked to go into closed session pursuant to 2.2-3711 Alpha 1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and consider prospective candidates for appointment. So I make a motion that we go according to Virginia Law 2.2-3711 Alpha 1 of the Code of Virginia.
A second.
All right. It's been motioned and seconded. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call for the question?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pete? Councilmember Fields?
Yes.
Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem Myles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nickerson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes.
We are now in closed session.
All right. I gotta run to the bathroom. All right. We certified closed session first, or do we? No, we continue.
No, just continue the meeting and state on the record, why?
All right. We're gonna continue this meeting to September 2nd. We just got word there was a shooting over in Port of Dumfries, and the police actively is two suspects on the loose, and we had our movie night going on, so you see Councilman Pete ran out. Councilwoman Peters has to go out to pick up their kids and the interns at the park. So we're gonna continue this closed session until September 2nd for the safety of our community, and so we'll come back. All right, so at this time, the council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.